Planning Commission, roll call please.
Commissioners Rubenstein.
Present.
Stejnik. Gordon.
Here.
Nibblin.
Here.
Vice Chair Clifford.
Present.
And Chair Campbell.
Here. For the salute to the flag, Commissioner Rubenstein, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubenstein. On to administrative business. Approval of the order of agenda, Commissioner Gordon.
I move that we approve the order of agenda.
Commissioner Nebelen.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. On to the approval of the minutes for August 20th, 2018. Anyone? Commissioner Clifford.
I move to approve the minutes for August, minutes, August 20th. Excuse me, I'm getting fumble mouthed.
Commissioner Nebelen.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we've had a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. I see we do not need a designation of liaison to the city council meeting. So onward to the oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda tonight. Time allowed for any speaker would be three minutes. If anyone wishes to speak, they would bring up a card. I don't see any, so I'm going to close oral communications, move on to public hearings because we do not have any consent items. First public hearing would be for home occupation permit appeal to allow outdoor dog agility training and the kenneling of up to one dog per night at an existing residence located at 295 Pine Haven Way. The recommended action tonight is to deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's decision. Staff report, please.
And before the staff report, I just wanted to introduce to the commission Helen Gannon, who is our new assistant planner, replacing Rob Smith. And I hope you welcome her, and she'll be giving the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you, Tina. My name is Helen, like Tina said, and I am the project planner for this appeal that's in front of you today. The original project proposal that was submitted in June included a request for obedience and agility dog training in the backyard, the management of the business conducted in a bedroom of the home, as well as kenneling of up to one dog per night on the subject property. On July 23rd, the zoning administrator approved the home occupation with conditions to exclude the outdoor agility training and the kenneling portion of the application. The home office for administrative purposes and operations of the dog training business was approved. It was determined that the outdoor training and agility could cause possible annoyance and disturbance to the surrounding neighbors. On July 30th, the applicant appealed the zoning administrator's decision and is seeking to remove the conditions that prohibit outdoor training and agility and kenneling on the property. Today, staff recommends upholding the zoning administrator's decision and denying the appeal. However, staff has prepared an alternate resolution to approve the home occupation as originally proposed with conditions of approval. I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, questions for staff. Commissioner Stejnik.
Is this a business where the home office and the dog agility clinic itself would be, are simultaneously compatible? Would one, can one exist without the other, or would their home office be useless without the dog agility?
That I don't know. The applicant is welcome. I'm not sure if they're here. The applicant can speak to that if you'd like, but the zoning administrator did decide to approve and felt that the in-home operation and management of the business would be compatible with the neighborhood.
And just to add to that, it was staff's understanding that the option would be to train dogs at their residence, and so that there would still be that component of the business available, it just wouldn't be at the residence of the applicant.
Can you repeat that?
So there's an option for the business to be conducted such that the home office is at the applicant's address, but that the applicant would then go to his client's home to do the training?
Say about for dog training delivery, kind of. I know typically when we have a dog-related issue here, we have a lot of neighbors, and I don't see any neighbors. I'm assuming this was noticed in a normal fashion to all the neighbors?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair. So, sort of following on from Commissioner Stejnik's comment, question. There was a notice given, and were there some, was there any public, was there any response from any of the neighbors?
On the first go-around, there was, when the initial application was received, we noticed neighbors and occupants within 200 feet of the property, and we received two written responses. One felt okay with the application so long as the noise was kept to a minimum, and the other one was not in favor of the application.
And is there any way to get a copy of any of that correspondence? Do we have any, is, do we have any here? Do we have that here?
While Helen is locating that, there is a separate process for home occupation, so if there is an outdoor component, then there is a required 200-foot noticing. So if it's completely indoors, you know, you don't have to do that noticing.
That makes sense.
I do have both of them.
That'd be great if you could circulate it among us, that would be really, I think, interesting for us to read.
Thank you.
Okay, while that's happening, Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the, looks like there was a component of sort of agility training and obedience training, as well as boarding. Was the boarding anticipated to occur within the four corners, or within the four walls of the home?
Yes, the kenneling would take place indoors.
So it would be the obedience and agility training that would take place outdoors?
That would be in the backyard, correct.
Did the applicant give any thought to whether or not it would be worthwhile to request the, that the boarding be permitted, as opposed to, but the boarding, well, the boarding be permitted, that being something that would take place indoors, as opposed to the agility training and the obedience training, maybe second things off?
They did not make that specific request, but they did make it known that they're open to any changes to this application.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Rubenstein.
My question was in regards to any complaints, which was asked and answered. Were there any other deviations from planning code with regard to the amount of space that's required in the rear yard for agility training, or how, you know, having a dog?
No, there wasn't. There is a minimum requirement, I believe, for the amount of square footage within a home, and they met that. There's, their, their square footage that they would be using in the home, they had stated roughly is about 85 and a half square feet, which would be the bedroom that they would use for the management and possibly the kenneling.
So the principal objection is because of barking dogs and two complaints?
Correct. Correct. That, I believe, was the zoning administrator's main reason for denying or approving with the conditions.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Stejnik.
I'm curious, when this originally went in front of the planning administrator, was the dogs, dog training onsite part sent to planning commissions separately? Like the home office was approved and, well, we can't approve that, but I'll send that to planning? Or was it your original recommendation that that not be approved either?
So, the zoning administrator decision was in totality looking at the entire project, and so it was conditioned, approved with conditions that not allowing the agility training, and did not need to come to planning commission until appealed.
Okay, I also note that there's, in the first letter from Marilyn Drago and Kent Walker, there, they have no objections as long as there's not dogs barking sustained on there. And the Caitlin Notch apparently wrote a letter saying they object due to the constant dogs barking for this specific applicant on there. Was that the, the dogs barking was the primary reason they were denied?
The potential, yeah, for the disturbance to the neighborhood.
Is there a limit on how many dogs a regular citizen, say pet dogs, can I have 15 pet dogs at my home, assuming they're properly housed?
No, there is a limit. It's in a separate section of the code, and I want to say the number three or five is sticking out in my mind.
Thank you.
I believe after five, you do need an animal permit.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thanks, Chair. So, just for my own clarification, the, so the only activity, so that, I want to get an understanding of the activity that was going to take, supposed to take place indoors versus outdoors. It sounds like the agility training was going to be, the applicant wanted to be outdoors onsite, the kenneling would be indoors onsite, and what else?
Correct, and then the portion that was approved was the inside, indoor management of the business.
Right. But so, I'm a little confused because the, even though the kenneling was going to be indoors, that part was approved or denied?
That part was denied.
Even though it was indoors?
Correct.
So now, so if the concern is, oh, they were concerned about dogs barking indoors also being, being an annoyance? Okay, I got that, that makes sense, okay, good.
Commissioner Nebelen.
I guess, just a couple of questions. If we were, and I don't see the city attorney here tonight, but I had a question about, you know, the extent to which if we were going to move in a direction of maybe approving some aspect of some of the uses that were originally denied, whether or not there could be a limit on the total number of dogs, maybe a number smaller than the number that would otherwise require a kenneling permit, for example. Maybe a total of, for example, no more than two dogs on the residence. Is that something that would be within our authority as a planning commission?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify another point. I was a little unclear on whether or not there was actual complaints that have ever been received from this particular location as to barking dogs, or whether or not that was just stated as a concerned potential barking.
My understanding, it was just for the potential.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Rubenstein.
This might be a question for the applicant, but is there a difference between agility training and behavioral training? When I think of agility, I think of dogs doing, like, really cool tricks and that kind of stuff, which lends me to think that they're already trained, well-behaved dogs versus problematic dogs that are trying to be, you know, fixed.
Yeah, I would think that would be for the applicant to address.
Right.
Commissioner Stejnik.
I'm just thinking back to the veterinarian establishment we approved earlier this summer. Did we put a cap on the total number of animals there overnight, dogs overnight?
I do not recall if we did.
And I think we had some sort of weekly refuse pickup there required or something?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
If I might, Commissioner Nibblin, to maybe speak on one of your points. In Exhibit A of Attachment 1C, we do have a condition in there that should the applicant have more than five animals present at any given time on the property, that the applicant will need to apply for an animal permit, which is required by our policy.
Thank you, and, but we could adjust that number if we felt five was too many?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more comments. All right, questions for staff, so let's have the applicant come up, and you have 10 minutes to present your project.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and good evening. After listening to your comments, I just want to clarify a couple of things that have been brought up with regards to the operation that I will be attempting to perform, and the number of dogs, the situation, basically that we're trying to avoid. I'd like to start off by talking a little bit about dog behavior. It is a great comparison, one of the greatest comparisons that I find as a dog trainer, to compare puppy and adolescent dog behavior with that of a small child. If you don't engage with a child or give them something that's going to keep their attention, they will figure out something to keep their own attention. Banging a spoon on a lunch tray or drawing on the walls are completely acceptable to children, in the same way that chewing on furniture or barking when nobody's paying attention to them are common behaviors for dogs. A dog that is engaged and actively doing something that's keeping their attention and keeping their mind stimulated is much less likely to get into these unwanted behaviors than one that is simply locked in the backyard and left to their own devices. In both of these cases, with children and with dogs, the best way to overcome these unwanted behaviors isn't to punish them, but to modify the behavior. By giving the dogs or children something else to do, teaching them how to use their spoon properly or draw on a coloring book instead of on the walls. Engaging your dog in obedience or agility or some activity that they were meant to do, rather than letting them figure it out for themselves. Most of the dog breeds that we see today in our communities, urban and suburban, were bred for a specific reason. Huskies and Malamutes, while really cool-looking on Game of Thrones, don't make great backyard dogs. They were meant to work, 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 and without that work, without that activity to do something, they will turn into destructive behaviors like digging or biting and chewing, et cetera. I can understand the reservations of the committee and the community members. Dog training typically means dogs barking, owners yelling, uncontrolled dogs, potential dog fights, and a whole host of other unwanted behaviors. Dog boarding means typically to most people, you know, 50 dogs in kennels barking, 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 and, you know, the smell of a dirty men's locker room. The operation that I'm proposing is going to be much smaller than those types of situations. With the single dog boarding and single dog agility and obedience training, it will not be dogs left unattended to their own devices, it will very much be a one-on-one tutoring sort of situation. To answer, I believe, somebody had a question about the difference between agility training and basic obedience. There is definitely a difference, but training a dog is very similar to training a muscle. It has to be worked and worked and worked until it is in great shape, and once it's in that great shape, it's got to be kept up. Getting a six-pack or a great physique will take months and months and months of proper diet and exercise, in the same way that positive rewards training for dogs takes a lot of time and maintenance to bring to par. Once it's up there, it's fantastic, and those are the types of dogs that we want in our communities. With regards to the adverse effects that this business will have on the surrounding community, they will be minimal. I would submit that the daily traffic and noise that will be generated from this business will be much less than our proximity to Highway 1 or a human daycare center, which we both have in the neighborhood that I'm proposing. In addition to, like I was saying earlier, this is going to be a very small operation, so the addition of one dog occasionally into our home on our property will be very minimalistic in terms of disturbance to the neighborhood, especially considering that our block has 10 permanent canine residents. Barking and everything, dogs are going to bark. Dogs need to run, they need to jump, there are certain things that they are going to do. However, as I was explaining earlier, in a situation where these animals are kept stimulated and monitored constantly, it won't be an overwhelming experience. I also have two dogs of my own, and I've been doing the agility training with them in my backyard for about the past two, two and a half years, and have not received any formal complaints or informal knocks on the doors from neighbors about noise control, about odors, about lighting, or anything like that. The operation that I'm proposing will take place during daytime hours only. We're not planning on putting up any signage, electrical or otherwise, additional lighting, nothing that should affect our neighboring communities. If anybody's interested, I do have some printouts that have pictures of the agility equipment that I have with scale references to the dogs that will be using them.
Yeah, if you could hand them to staff, that'd be fantastic, thanks.
As you can see from the pictures, all of the equipment is relatively small in size. The largest piece of equipment is what we call an A-frame, which is exactly that, a wooden frame shaped like an A that the dogs go up and down. The tallest that it can possibly be is about four and a half feet. None of the agility equipment that I have in production will exceed the sightlines of the fences into the neighboring properties. If knocked over or moved in any direction, they will not, they will not damage or have the ability to damage any property. None of them have very many moving parts, so noise generated from the equipment will also be minimal. We do, we already do, as I, as I explained earlier, I do have two dogs of my own, so maintenance of the property is also very big. I don't like smelling outdoor potty areas any more than the next person does. Besides regular maintenance of cleaning up after the dogs, we also spray with an enzymatic chemical, which breaks down the urine and defecation smell, so that other dogs do not mark. This is beneficial to anybody inside the area, because we do not want dogs coming into our property and marking, but also to the surrounding area. Dogs don't necessarily need to smell the exact spot that's marked in order to go to neighbors, or fence lines, or tires, et cetera, et cetera. That's all I have for the committee, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Looks like there's going to be a few. Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you. So it sounds like you'd be proposing, at least as things stand right now, a total number of dogs not to exceed three on the premises, is that?
That's correct, including my own two.
Got it. And you made reference to the activities outdoors taking place during daytime hours. Would you be prepared to, you know, sort of be a little more specific about, you know, no time after a set time, whether it's five or six, or?
I would say probably no time after 6:00. I do have a day job in San Francisco, dog training, so this would not happen five days, five or seven days a week. I do not anticipate ever getting out of bed to do agility training before 10:00 in the morning. So we're talking about maybe eight hours a day, normal working hours, nine to six, or somewhere thereabouts.
How long have you been a dog trainer?
Professionally, two years.
What's the professional, what kind of preparation does one do to, is it primarily self-study, or how does one become a dog trainer?
Primarily. I got into dog training through my own dogs. I went to a facility in San Francisco called Smarty Pup. After that, my German Shepherds continued to require more training, so I took them to various places around the Bay Area, Cooper House Canine in Milpitas, and various private trainers around the peninsula. I was really into it and decided it was something that brought me joy much more than my regular nine-to-five in IT. So a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, I made the official switch and have been doing it ever since. In terms of study, there is no regulated government body that issues certifications for dog training, so as you say, it's primarily self-study.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
All right, I'm going to, it looks like all of your equipment is portable, and I did hear staff say something about you were willing to go to your client's house also?
I am very willing to go to my client's house for obedience training, but while the agility training equipment is somewhat portable, most of it is extremely heavy, with the exception of the collapsible tunnel. This is made of two-by-fours and thick plywood that has had outside treating, so it's heavy to begin with, and none of it breaks down because it's, you know, it's wood, it's screwed together.
My next question is, I've heard you say, and I've read, that you're only planning on kenneling one dog, plus the two of your own dogs. One, by kenneling, do you mean you're actually going to put them in a crate, or are they going to have free run of your home?
Excellent question. I preferably personally do not like the term kenneling, because it does have connotations of, you know, the SPCA, or kind of big operations where dogs are kind of left in a crate or in a kennel on their own for several hours a day. What I'm offering is more of a personal experience. The dogs who come over to be boarded in our home will be treated as members of the family. Those dogs who are not housebroken or have not proven their ability to be on their own will be crated during times when they are not 100% supervised, such as at nighttime, or, you know, when I've got to run out for an emergency, a vet appointment, or other engagements.
Okay. And the agility training, dog training, how many dogs are you going to be training at a time? Because I'm seeing that there's a difference in what you're proposing. One is the kenneling, and the other is the training. How many dogs are actually going to be present during a training?
I would not have, they would be mutually exclusive, but I would not have a dog boarded or kennelled at the same time as an in-house training would be going on. So it would be a maximum of one client at a time at the home.
So it's, you're never going to have more than three dogs there with your two and just one dog to be trained?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stejnik.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other pets, say, over five pounds on the premises?
No.
I'm looking at the, are these pictures your actual physical location?
Yes, sir, and those are my dogs.
Got it. Is it two Germans, or a Belgian and a German?
Two Germans.
They, are these, I'm taking these aren't family pets, these are working dogs?
No, those are family pets.
For the, are you training dogs for a specific industry, or are these just, you're training family pets?
I'm training family pets. These are not police canines, they're, I'm not training for agility competition. This is more of a family setting, learn how to train and bond with your animal.
Do you primarily train German Shepherds?
No, I am, I am not biased towards the dog breed, though.
Not dog-est. I will note that the county allows up to 10 cats and dogs on a location on there, so Pacific is actually already quite limited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair. So, question for you. So we got, you know, once the planning department give notice to the neighborhood, I think within like 100 or 200 feet of your house, a couple of emails were sent in, and did you, are you familiar with the content of them? No?
Only insofar as what I heard earlier.
Okay, let me, I just want to read one to you, and I want to get, or a part of one, and I want to get your response. "I'm not in favor of a dog training business within 100 feet of my home. There is constant dog barking from both that residence," meaning your residence, "and the residence behind Mr. Brennan on Bradford Way, of which numerous comments, complaints have been posted on next door. Neither the applicant nor the resident behind him have done anything in the last couple of years to keep their dogs quiet." So anyway, this neighbor is very concerned about the noise issue. And I just wanted to give you a chance to, since we've all read this, I want to give you a chance to respond to that concern, which is probably the same, you know, the noise annoyance issue in a residential neighborhood is probably what animated the initial decision by the administrator, so what say you?
It's, as the person, the complainee points out, that I have not done anything to hamper my dogs from barking for the past however long it's been, it's been bothering them. It's hard to fix a problem when it's not known that a problem exists. If nobody complains, how am I supposed to know that it's a problem? Having said that, this is also not a business complaint. They're complaining about my residential dogs, who have not always been left supervised. I do have to go to work. As I stated before, my dogs are German Shepherds, and German Shepherds are primarily used professionally as guard dogs. My dogs are very territorial. When the UPS guy, or the mailman, or a neighborhood dog walks by, they're going to bark. It's not excessive, it's not continuous, as soon as the quote-unquote "dis..." not excessive, it's not continuous. As soon as the quote-unquote disturbance has moved on, the dogs stop barking. Well aware of my neighbor on Bradford Way who has a coon hound who loves to talk through the fence to my shepherds. But again, I would be happy to address the issue and keep them indoors more, or work them more, in accordance with whatever the committee wishes, but it's, once again, it's hard to correct a problem if, if nobody reports it.
Let me ask you another question. So the, I'll just be honest, the notion of having a dog training business in a, in a residential neighborhood is a little bit odd to me. Have you considered conduct, carrying on your business in a, in a commercial location, in an area where there's stores, for example, instead of homes?
I have, but the, the training that I'm doing is not one of the most popular versions. The amount of space that I would need in a commercial area to get this done would be outside of the financial means that I'm trying to achieve with the business. I'm not looking to get to PetSmart Mega World agility training. I'm really trying to give more of a personal one-on-one, which is why I'm starting with all the basic equipment. This is out of my backyard. It's, it's not, I'm not reaching for that sort of scale.
Thanks.
Just so I can get clear, the training component of your business, if, or I'm sorry, the kenneling component, if you're kenneling one of the, one dog, would that dog then be kennelled outside when you're gone at work, or is that, is that an option?
There would be no kenneling or tethering outside. Anytime that the dogs would be left alone, in the event that they would, which would not be, it would be an emergency situation only. If I had to go to work, the dog comes with me. As I stated before, I work in a dog training facility in San Francisco, so the dogs would not be left on their own. If I needed to leave them alone, they would be crated indoors, not left outdoors.
That would be, and that would be as to the dog that you're responsible for kenneling and training?
Yes.
Right. And then your two dogs stay outside when you're gone?
My dogs have indoor/outdoor access. They're not restricted to one or the other.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more questions for you. We might have some after or during deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna bring this to public hearing. If anyone has, if anyone wants to speak on this subject, they would have a card, come up here and speak for three minutes, but I don't see any. So, unless there's any over there. Okay. So I'm gonna close public hearing on this and bring it to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I had a couple of questions for staff, if I could.
Okay, Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you. One, I just want to, I assume it's kind of self-evident, but I just want to make sure I had this right. So these permits are specific to particular applicants, correct? It's not the kind of thing that runs with the property?
That's right.
The second question is, if we wanted to issue a permit but for a, sort of a limited period of time, say a year to see how it goes, is that something that we could do? How, how are these permits typically issued? Is it sort of a permanent, you know, thing, you're good forever, or is, would we have the discretion in a situation like this where we're trying to feel our way a little bit, to issue a permit maybe for a shorter period of time so that we have a chance to sort of revisit how things are going?
So the code does contain suspension revocation provisions, and so if you, if the commission felt that they wanted to give this, you know, an annual review, we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Clifford.
Okay. As part of the deliberation, I want to be clear. I've, I've had several dogs and have one right now, all of which have been through training, and none of that training took place at a residential, in a residential setting. It was, generally speaking, it was done in school parking lots. So I am a little nervous about approving dog training in a neighborhood. I don't, I want to be very careful about setting a precedent about having, setting up offices with the business actually having some outdoor activity at the, in a residential area. I also have a, a business out of my home, but nobody comes to it. I go to the customer. It's, that's where my office is. So I'm, I'm familiar with both aspects of this, and I wanted to be clear on that. I am a little concerned about allowing a dog training facility in a neighborhood. I want to just put that out there.
Just a real quick question for staff. We, I think someone else asked this as well earlier. We had in Rockaway, a recent decision to allow...
Harvey.
Huh?
It was on Harvey?
Yeah, I, I forget, honestly, but we allowed a, a dog, a vet, I think it was, or something like that.
Sort of outdoor relief areas and... And things like that, if I'm not misrecalling.
Right, and I think there was a commercial, I think it might have actually been zoned commercial at Rockaway? Is that correct?
Yes.
But it was basically in, in the neighborhood.
Right, it was in a commercially zoned area that's transitioning. There's a mix of commercial and ongoing residential uses there.
Okay. Let's see. Commissioner Rubenstein?
I mean, I actually like this idea for a couple of reasons. One, there'll be a business license. He'll be, so he'll have to pay a business fee. As you know, if you have a home office, you do in Pacifica. Two, if we have a revocation component, where if there are numerous complaints, we can revisit this. It doesn't sound like there are actually too many complaints, considering he has two German Shepherds at the moment. And the fact that he's only gonna be training one dog at a time doesn't seem excessive at all to me. So that, notwithstanding the fact that it's in a residential area, you know, I like this project with those conditions.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I get the sense that if we had an annual review, the applicant might even pay more mind to the barking of his, of his, of the German Shepherds, because they, no one's gonna make the distinction when they complain.
That's true.
All right, Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair. Unfortunately, I think Commissioner Rubenstein and Chair Campbell are barking up the wrong tree here. Yeah, I do. Notwithstanding my punishment, yeah, I'm, I'm on the other side of the fence, so to speak. Yeah, I just don't see the compatibility of dog training happening outdoors in a, in a residential neighborhood. It sounds like there are complaints about excessive dog noise, but it's being posted on Nextdoor, not necessarily going to the, not necessarily going to the occup, to the, to Mr. Brennan or his neighbor. I'm not a dog owner, and I have had problems with neighbors who have had loud dogs. I've been able to address those issues just by, by directly talking to the neighbors, and they've brought their dogs inside or dealt with them in one way or another, so. But in, in any event, no, I, I think just on principle, it just doesn't seem like the kind of use that belongs in a residence. Even if so, I appreciate Commissioner's attempt at compromising by having like a, a one-year renewal period, and that sounds like a very reasonable approach, but I think I'm just not even, I just don't even see the, it just doesn't sound like a smart move. This, this doesn't belong in a neighborhood, that's all. That's my position.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you. I, actually, this, this juncture, it's not always the case, but in this case, I disagree with Commissioner Gordon. I think Commissioner Rubenstein is on the right track here. I, I think that people have probably been training dogs in residential neighborhoods for time immemorial. I, I don't think that this is a, much more than an incremental additional risk of additional noise. I think that the point is well made, that if anything, sort of the notion of an annual review may in fact decrease the total amount of noise that we're dealing with from, from dogs in this particular area. I think it's an innovative idea. It's entrepreneurial. I think it is, to the extent that we can get ourselves comfortable with performance standards, including maybe, you know, limiting the hours such that we're not dealing with this, and, you know, outdoor activities after a certain time, to the extent that we, again, are able to revisit this on a periodic basis. I, I think it's a, I think it's an idea that I can get behind.
Yeah, I, I want to just add, one data point is that I, I've had trainers come to my house and train one of my dogs. It does happen in the neighborhoods. I'm not saying it happens every day at my house. It's happened like once or twice, but it does happen in, in a neighborhood setting. And I kind of like Commissioner Nebelen's approach of an, of an hourly set time of start and stop. All right, Commissioner Stegic.
I'm curious how an annual review might work. Would it be similar to the annual review placed on 7/11?
Yes, that's my...
I noticed when we were talking about 7/11 at the last meeting, we were told that we couldn't change any of the terms of the permit without it going through city council first. Would that also be the case here?
No, we would, we would need to determine first if the planning commission felt that there was grounds to, to amend the permit anyways, and then we would renotice it, and it would come back, so that there was proper notification of the actual action that the planning commission would be taking.
I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Nebelen that, you know, this is a valuable service. It's not overbearing on the neighbors. The applicant seems to be a good citizen who's attempting to, to produce a product in the best way possible. I have several neighbors with double this number of dogs on their property, and I'm pretty sure they're not aware there's a five-dog limit. And again, the county's limit is 10 dogs for a kennel or a cattery. I wasn't aware that was a word previous to tonight. But I, I think this is a reasonable use, and put a one-year cap on it, and we'll take a look at it. And if, you know, he's now aware that his neighbors have complained perhaps of the, of the noise, if Nextdoor can be considered a reliable source. And, yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to approve this.
Commissioner Rubenstein.
Yeah, I would just reiterate the quality of the applicant. He obviously knows what he's doing. It's not just a, kind of a haphazard type of a business. I think for the annual review of it, we may want to have a posting or something that goes on the property so the neighbors have a chance actually to, to respond if there is an issue, and not, you know, rely on Nextdoor or something else. And again, I think it helps keep his own dogs in check, because nobody's gonna be able to distinguish between a kennel dog or a, a dog in training and his own dogs. And finally, I, I like the fact that he's coming before the city to ask for this permit and this use, where probably other people would just be doing it in their backyard. So in this sense, we're able to monitor it, control it, tax it, and I agree, it's a good neighborhood-serving use to have a dog trainer, you know.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair. I should have asked this from the start. Are there, question for staff, are there currently dog training businesses approved for use in, in a residential neighborhood in Pacifica?
We did not go back and do a historical review. I can say, in the three years since I've been here, this is the only request we've had.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, too, when, when, I think several commissioners have said, well, we've had dog trainers come into our house and, and train. I think that's, I'm trying to see this from the, if I was a neighbor of the applicant, you know, my experience would not be, would be, would I, would I want to approve this? And so it's not that, for example, I have a dog at my house and a trainer comes to my house once or twice a year, it's, and my neighbors have to deal with that, whatever. It's that there are, you know, there's probably training happening on a regular basis right next door to me, and how would I feel about that? Now, I, I mean, I also understand that the applicant said that there's a lot of dogs in the neighborhood, and there's a lot of noise already from Highway One and whatnot. And I, I guess I'm looking at it more, you know, that's, that's a fair point, and I mean, it's an incremental addition. I don't know, it's just, I, I can tell I'm the losing side of this, so I'm not gonna belabor it, but I'm also, it's, there's something, this doesn't, it doesn't seem like the right fit, a dog training facility approved for use in a residential neighborhood.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on what I thought were Commissioner Rubenstein's really sort of well-framed comments and observations. And in particular, I was wondering perhaps about a, an additional condition of approval, if we were going to go the route of approving the appeal, requiring notice to the same neighbors who got notice in the first instance about the fact that the permit had been approved, and the proper process for lodging concerns if concerns come up in the next year, along with a clear statement that the matter will be reviewed in a year, so that everybody who received notice in the first instance will know that Nextdoor, you know, feel free to post on Nextdoor, but if you want to express concerns about the matter, that the planning commission will consider. And frankly, if it ends up being a nuisance in a legal sense, you know, we don't have to wait a year to, to deal with issues. That's certainly within staff's sort of kin to deal with if an issue, you know, with respect to noise occurs that is significant enough that something ought to be done before, you know, we get this back in a year. But again, sort of this notion of notice going out, and maybe even that being a condition of approval that the applicant would be required to, to, to fund, sort of this notice out to neighbors about the approval and how to express concerns that come up over the course of the next many months.
And that's, that's something that's possible?
Yes.
Okay. I, I like...
I like that idea a lot.
...approach, because it does keep the applicant in a, I'm trying to avoid saying, on a short leash, God help me. But, you know, on, on a...
Sure.
I'm sensitive to the fact that we've got, you know, we could have these facilities where all of a sudden you get a bunch of dogs, and you're next door, and that's, I do, I do want to be sensitive with that, and I think Commissioner Gordon raises some, a good point there. Okay, Commissioner Clifford.
Well, I'm going to say that I agree with Commissioner Gordon, and I won't be voting for actual training on-site. I'm perfectly happy to, for them to have their office there, but I'm not, not interested in going down that road. I've, I've been a neighbor to people who have had too many dogs, and I don't want to risk doing that to somebody else.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Well, if there isn't any further to be said about it, I'm prepared to make a motion. And my motion would be, I would move that the planning commission find the application is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, and approve administrative permit A00418 by adopting the resolution included as attachment, see to the staff report, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A of the resolution incorporating all maps and testimony into the record by reference, wanting to add a condition that would limit the hours of outdoor agility training to hours before 6:00, and, and nothing prior to 8:00 a.m. Also, an, an annual review of the permit being a condition of approval, and finally notice to all neighbors within 200 feet, I guess, is the, is the notice radius of the fact that the permit has been granted, and the process for sharing information regarding concerns with city staff.
I had, I had, just as a point of clarification, I had the soonest training happening at, not before 10:00 a.m. from the applicant. I'm wondering if that...
That's, that's, I admit my motion, if, if that was the, the understanding. 10:00 a.m. is fine. 10:00 AM is fine.
Okay.
That's my motion.
I noticed both the resolutions say up to one dog for a fee overnight, whereas when we discussed, the discussion was almost solely on no more than three dogs.
Three dogs total, thank you. That would be another thing that I would want added, is no more than three dogs on resident, on the premises at any, at any time. Three dogs total.
If there's no further deliberations, I'd second the motion.
If you had a motion, a second, please vote. All right, and that passes four to two. Let's see. Congratulations, you have an approved project. Anyone aggrieved by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. All right. Next public hearing. It is to remodel and enlarge a 643 square foot first-floor dwelling unit by 974 square feet within the existing footprint of a two-story, three-unit multifamily residential building at 1 Carmel Avenue. The recommended action is to approve as conditioned. Staff report, please.
Good evening. I'm contract planner Ranu Agarwal, and the project before you relates to a coastal development permit for the enlargement of a first-floor dwelling unit within the existing footprint of a two-story multifamily residence or residential building. The building is located on a 7,500 square foot lot at the northeastern corner of 1 Carmel Avenue and Beach Boulevard in the coastal zone. The building includes a total of three units, two of which are on the first floor and one is on the second floor. It also includes two two-car attached garages and an additional detached two-car garage in the rear yard. The unit to be enlarged is located on the first floor and a 643 square feet in area with one bedroom. The project would enlarge this unit by 974 square feet through reconfiguration and remodeling of the interiors. This project requires approval of a coastal development permit and meets the required findings for approval as is summarized in the staff report. In brief, the project is consistent with the applicable policies of the local coastal land use plan in that it does not interfere with public's right to access to the sea, is contiguous to developed areas, and would not impact scenic coastal areas, as there are minimal exterior changes to the facade along Carmel Avenue and no changes to the existing nine-foot-two-inch height. It also does not impair stability and structural integrity of the site and the surrounding areas. There is an existing seawall along Beach Avenue in, I'm sorry, Beach Boulevard in front of the site, and the scope of the project would not negatively impact the status of this wall. So this recommendation from staff is to approve the requested coastal development permit along with the two revisions to conditions of approval number nine and number 12 BI on Page 65 and 66 of the packet. Here, there is a reference to Olympian Way which should be replaced with Carmel Avenue. So that concludes staff report. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford.
How many bedrooms will be in existence after the remodel?
Three.
Three.
In that unit.
Okay, and it's a one-bedroom now?
Yes.
What does that do to their parking requirements?
Well, there are two cars required with one unit, and there is, for two bedrooms or more, there is two cars required, so they would have the two cars.
Okay, so how many cars are required for the whole building right now?
Six.
Six, and there are six parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more questions for staff, so if the applicant wants to come up, you've got 10 minutes to present your project.
Good evening, Commissioner. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Derek. I'm from the design firm, architect for Wayne Carmel. The project, it's, it's to enlarge one of the units within this existing envelope. Part of the units that we're expanding into, it's mainly storages, and all of them are used as our storages for the units itself. And we're keeping part of the, one of the area, it's actually a laundry area, and we are keeping a laundry area for the comments, use for the tenants. And then the only facade change is really is on the side of the property to include two patio doors that leads to the bedroom for lights and ventilation and egress. That's the minimal changes to the exterior. And open space are met with the existing deck and patio on the property. And again, all the area that we're expanding into are just existing storages that, that be better used for a family to stay in, for like a bedroom, family uses better than the storages in this moment. And thus conclude my presentations, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioner Rubenstein.
Was the previous tenant evicted that lived, that used to live in this unit?
No. I would maybe have the current tenant answer that question, maybe?
Sure.
Hi, my name is Lance Sorensen, and I'm the current tenant at that property. Mrs. Q bought the property last November, and I rent from her. I'm a property manager and I, in the Bay Area here. And she, we, what we found was the building had a, Michael Bell was the old owner, he was an architect, and he had tons of storage in the building, so there's, there's, there's an art studio area that he did, and there's a lot of places that are really not usable. And so it, it looked like at one time he must have taken square footage away from the building, and so there's a lot of extra storage there now. And this would probably be a better fit and allow us to, allow me to move in instead of staying in a one-bedroom. It would be a little bit, a little more square footage for our family.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more lights on up here. No more questions for you at the moment. At this point, I would open up the public hearing. If anyone out there wanted to speak, they'd fill out a card and bring it up. I don't see any cards, so I'm going to close that and bring this matter back to commission Commissioner Clifford.
Well, it seems like a straightforward project. It's not going to add any more needs for parking off-street. I've actually been there when Mike Bell owned the place. I think this is a good, good use of the space to make it a three-bedroom and make it a more comfortable living arrangement for the manager. That's it.
Commissioner Gordon.
I fully concur. I think it's a great project, and the background, the historical background was really appreciated. So it makes a lot of sense, and I'm ready to make a motion unless there's, commissioners want to make any more comments.
Commissioner Stojkovic.
Are the, the mentioned art studio and unused areas, are those currently permitted or are they just?
Oh, could you, we, we can't.
It's our understanding that, as I said, an architect owned it formerly and that there's all, all the permits, necessary permits were obtained.
So the art studio is permitted?
Right, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon.
I'm going to move that the planning commission find the project is exempt from SEQA-approved coastal development permit CDP-399-18 by adopting attached resolution including conditions of approval in Exhibit A and incorporates all maps and testimony of the record by reference. Is that right? Did I do that right? So I'm moving, yes. I'm moving that we approve this project.
Through the chair with the, with the note that those two conditions, number nine and number, that'll be I. Number nine and number 12 BI, that the reference to Olympian Way is changed to Carmel. To Carmel.
Yes.
That's just a nomenclature for the address.
It's, it's just noting that there is a mistake on some of the conditions, that the wrong street is listed.
Scribner's error. All right, let's see, Commissioner Clifford.
I'll second that motion with the changes, with the, with the notation that there's problems with the address in terms of Olympian Way versus Carmel.
Thank you. We've had a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously, unanimously. Congratulations, you have approved project. Anyone aggrieved by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. Okay, onward to commission communications, anyone? Okay. Staff commu, oh, Commissioner Stojkovic.
Yeah, back, I think in February, we brought up basically, I was interested in seeing if any other commissioners were, we had a vigorous debate about whether any other commissioners were interested in scheduling a study session to consider expediting routine residential construction permits of less than 50% additional square footage. I'm interested in taking a vote on an agenda, as in a study session, to see if there's anything we can do to move some of these residential permits ahead at a faster rate, perhaps using some of the, the, some of the benefits we've used through the state with ADUs. And I'm curious if there's any other commissioners who might be interested in that before we take a vote.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Just sort of curious as to the, sort of the scope and scale of, I mean, I think the study session along the lines that the commissioner is sort of raising would make some sense. I'm just curious about, you know, kind of what are the timelines currently and, you know, what's the volume of, of the work we'd be talking about? It does sound like a worthy thing to pursue. I'm just curious again as to the scope and scale of the issue.
So I would need to do a little bit more research and determine, in order to make meaningful changes, how, how much staff time and energy would be needed, and then talk to the city manager about the council's work plan and whether or not that fits in or if that would be something to go onto a future work plan. But I definitely think it's worth looking at if, if the commission is interested.
Commissioner Clifford.
One thing I want to caution us on is voting on anything that's not on the agenda.
I think that's right. I would have thought perhaps it would just give some guidance to staff about something, something we'd like to see on a future agenda.
Yeah, actually, the commission by law stated a study session can be called at any time by a, by a majority of the planning commission. That would be four of us, so.
Yeah, that's, I should know this on the chair, but fortunately I don't. Commissioner Rubenstein.
Yeah, I would add that I'd be in favor of a study session to help streamline the process. I'm just curious, as on the planning commission, what we can do to not see these projects? I guess that's what we're asking to have staff do, right? For these smaller projects, but I'd be happy to participate.
So, so just to give you some background, staff does not try to bring these to the planning commission and make, make applicants go through this. We actually try, when there's interpretation involved, to err on the side of, you know, somebody trying to improve their property. In this case, this involves development in the coastal zone, which is even maybe stricter and perhaps more draconian than any other location in town. And so we tried really hard to find an exemption for this one because it's all within interior walls and we couldn't. So just so you guys know, that's where we're coming, that's where we're coming from. All the same, there is a lot of opportunity in the code to streamline and make things easier, and actually building the department's trust with the community and with the commission is something that I have been working for so that you guys actually ask us to do this. And so I'm happy to have the request. I just need to now figure out how that works into the council's work plan and moving that forward. So this isn't something that is not welcomed by staff. It very much is, this conversation is a good conversation to have for the community.
That's great. Okay.
Well, I don't have any other.
To be clear, I'm going to call for a vote on agendizing a study session for this. They can figure out the schedule at any time. It could be next year, it could be January, whatever. But I'm going to ask for a vote on.
Do we need a vote?
We do need a vote to agendize the item.
Could I, perhaps Mr. Chair suggests that maybe just we could, just by consensus, ask staff if we, if we, as a group feel it's an appropriate thing? I'm, I am a little concerned just because, again, it's not an agendized matter. I recognize that perhaps our bylaws provide for something like that, but again, I'd certainly be comfortable with the idea of giving staff our desire to see something agendized at some point in the, in the reasonably near future to talk about the matter.
I think that's all we need to do.
I understand that, but I understand if we don't make it a priority, it will never become a priority. And I understand that there's, there's certain things here that, that obviously, maybe, maybe anything in the coastal zone is an applicable, but there's certain things we've seen that, you know, you've got some applicants spending six, $6,000 to $10,000 here to get a very quick thumbs up from us, and there's some other procedures that perhaps cost some money that don't add a lot of value to the public beyond basic building.
Well, let's give, let's give, you know, let's give the approach of you asking, of staff asking council whether they've got the time and, and the resources and see, see where that goes, and let's, let's bring this back up maybe at the next meeting to see what happens.
Sure.
And then we can just see if we actually need to take a.
I'd still like to call for a vote on it.
Uh, no. I don't think we'll be calling.
Is city attorney's not here, correct?
No.
Okay, I believe it is within the bylaws for me to call a vote on there. I understand the reasons for not doing it, but.
I, Mr. Chair, I would just indicate that I'd probably be opposed to voting in favor of something I might be more comfortable voting in favor of at a future meeting.
Yeah.
If we could get a little more information.
To be quite clear, this is to agendize it for a future meeting.
I don't think we need a vote to, to request that the matter come back to us at a future meeting. I guess that's where I sit.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to call for a vote, but maybe the next meeting.
Again, I'm going to call for a vote. Everybody can vote against it or they can vote for it, but I'm going to call for a vote.
Don't you need a second? You need a second?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Clifford.
If there's a vote, I'm abstaining.
So just so I'm clear, we're voting to put this on the agenda in a certain period of time?
No, to, we're voting to approve a study session for that at a, at a time that the planning department would deem suitable.
I mean, I, I agree with it. I just don't know about procedurally if it's the right thing to do or not, so.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll be willing to withdraw it if, if we'll discuss it in the future and make a good faith effort to achieve this because I think there's a lot of people that are renovating the property, building it, that are spending, having your permits approved shouldn't be the toughest part of building your renovation on your home.
No, I, and I think, to be clear, I think it's a good idea, and I think we, it should be explored, and I think I'm, hope, my hope, my hope is that this does get agendized by the city council, but I just don't think we need a vote.
And to be clear, I'm not calling a vote because it seems that that vote would not pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for raising it, though. Commissioner Nebelen.
No further comment, thank you.
Okay. Let's see, before we move on to staff communications, I do want to welcome Ms. Gannon to the city.
Thank you.
Well done tonight. And off to staff communications.
Just two items really quick. I wanted to let you all know that we have another sea level rise adaptation planning community meeting on September 15th at noon, so after you're done with coastal cleanup, you can come on over to the community center from noon to 3:00. We'll be talking about draft policies, which will actually be coming before the planning commission in November. And just wanted to give you. the planning commission in November. And just wanted to give you a heads up that just the way schedules, priorities, and legislative statutory requirements and timelines, we're going to have a busy agenda on the 17th. We have our first cannabis business use permit. We have 7/11 coming back, and we have some wireless facilities, so just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you.
The big one.
All right, we have reached that time of the evening. Commissioner Clifford.
I move we adjourn.
Commissioner Nebelen.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, good night.